Let's call this meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I wanted to see if there's a motion to amend the agenda to start with the Autism Awareness Proclamation, followed by a public audience, and also to amend the agenda to include three Public Works job descriptions, which would be the new item E under Selectmen Action.
Move that.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Okay, that motion carries. So April is Autism Awareness Month and we will be continuing the tradition of lighting Eno blue. And we've also prepared a proclamation, which I will read. Whereas autism spectrum disorder affects an estimated one in 54 US children and one in 45 US adults, and is a complex condition that affects each person differently, resulting in unique strengths and challenges. And whereas autism can cause challenges with verbal and nonverbal communication, social interaction, and repetitive behaviors, and can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background. And whereas autism is often accompanied by medical conditions that impact quality of life, and whereas a comprehensive collaborative approach will help to advance research, providing a better understanding of the many forms of autism, while strengthening advocacy efforts and ensuring access to services and resources throughout the lifespan. And whereas early diagnosis and intervention tailored to individual needs can have lifelong benefits, easing the transition to adulthood and fostering greater independence. And whereas each person and family affected by autism should have access to reliable information and supports. And whereas autistic people should have opportunities to reach their greatest potential, and the whole of society stands to benefit from this. And whereas the town of Simsbury is honored to take part in the annual observance of World Autism Awareness Month and World Autism Awareness Day to address the diverse needs of individuals with autism and their families. Therefore, I Eric Wellman for Selectmen do hereby proclaim April 2021 as World Autism Month and April 2nd, 2021 as World Autism Awareness Day in Simsbury to create a kinder, more inclusive world for people with autism spectrum disorder. Let me see if I can find the motion that we prepared. Is there a motion effective March 22nd, 2021 to issue this proclamation in support of Autism Awareness Month?
Make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And we have some guests with us tonight, and I'd like to begin by introducing Jack Knoll. Jack, are you with us?
Yep. Thank you Board of Selectmen for having me. Recognizing autism awareness and acceptance is important to people like me because I have autism myself and people like me are no less human than normal people. If people understand autism, then they recognize that I have unique talents so they can hire me for a job and support me in being a part of the community, like being in theater and choir. I don't understand normal people all the time. Either so, so that would mean that we should not make assumptions about other people. When we take time to learn about each other, it makes a big difference. Shout out to my mom for being really cool. For Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month, please consider lighting the town up blue and learning about autistic people. Thank you.
Jack, thank you. It's our absolute pleasure. Thanks for being with us tonight. I'd also like to introduce Robin Bachelder. Hi, Robin.
Hello, Mr. Eric, how are you?
I'm well. It's good to see you again.
I just have one correction. We are not autistic people. We are people with autism and we should not ever put the autism, the autistic first. So I would love to have that correction in your proclamation that we are people with autism. We are not autistic people.
Thanks, Robin. We'll make that change.
You're welcome. So I just wanted to read what I wrote. My name is Robin Bachelder. I have lived in Simsbury for 40 years. I have, I once had minimal confidence in myself. Fortunately for me, I have many friends in my community such as John, Shannon, and Jack. I would like there to be more events for people with disabilities so I don't have to travel to other towns to socialize. I never thought that with my autism, I would be able to have my own business, drive a car, and live independently. My biggest honor from this community was when I was, was when I was, when I got a proclamation from my community from the state of Connecticut. I love being a proud cat mom to my cat Birdie. My, I was selected to go to Australia to represent Connecticut for a dream ride, which is a weekend, it was, which is a weekend-long celebration for special Olympians. Many of my peers do not have the same opportunities as I do, as I did growing up here, but I believe through unaware community, good friends, and family, we can all achieve our personal best.
I love it. Robin, thank you so much, and Jack too. Have a great night.
We could go now?
You may.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for being with us.
Thank you, guys.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we are going to turn now to public audience. The first letter we received is from Kirsten Morrow. Good afternoon. I write this letter to voice my concern and dismay over the use of language, tone, and intent in the zoning commission's last meeting on 3/12/2021. Mr. Ryan's thinly veiled racist tone and language, of which he is clearly unaware of, should be addressed and perhaps remedied with racial sensitivity training. Referring to people as ethnics, in that all ethnics are great is just the tip of the iceberg. He too posed the question, is there a natural inclination for people to want to live amongst each other? And pondering why there isn't more ethnicity, specifically black folks living in town. He has no grasp of the historical record of racial segregation determined by housing rules and laws in this state. In that he drafted a letter that thankfully was edited, although not nearly enough to include language such as reverse gentrification and plopping undesirable urban housing into a suburban setting indicates the need for six hours minimum of training a year suggested as a requirement for zoning and planning commissions. Although the commission seemed to be in agreement to taking the training, the fact that they voiced concern over having to cover the same information every year clearly displays they've never had to work in a profession where yearly training many times covering the same information, first aid, CPR, as an example, is part of the requirements to ensure safety and a refreshing of knowledge. But the commission overwhelmingly rejected support by the proposed SB 1024 in favor of maintaining local control while stating that those who want to have an ADU that is separate from their main house and greater than 600 square feet requires permission from the zoning commission and can be rejected by neighbors who lobby against it is hypocritical. Keep town control but reject the control of the person who owns their own land and house in favor of what neighbors want? This seems the antithesis of individual freedoms that this country holds dear. I live at the ridge at Talcott Mountain, a luxury multifamily, high-density, multi-parking development plopped at the south end of our suburban town. It's all the things that Mr. Ryan has spoken out against in regards to affordable housing, as he states undesirable urban housing. If Mr. Ryan and the zoning commission are overwhelmingly against the proposal of SB 1024 in favor of local control and maintaining a small-town suburban feel, how do they explain decisions to approve an urban-sized development like the ridge at Talcott Mountain while refusing the control of the individual residence who wants to build an ADU to supplement either their income, family size, or independence for a child with disabilities in favor of what their neighbor prefers? This all smacks of hypocrisy and racism. Thank you, Kirsten Morrow. And Sean, you have the next letter.
I do. So this one is in reference to opposition to House Bill 1024. Hello and thank you for saving Simsbury. I moved to Hartford 22 years ago from New Jersey. If you only live there for 10 months, I've lived in Simsbury ever since. Got married here in town. We're raising a family here. Please don't let the idiots in Hartford make decisions for Simsbury. They've destroyed Hartford and will destroy Simsbury. Thanks, Todd Diamond.
This next email is from Justin Crane. Good afternoon. I'm writing to congratulate our Simsbury zoning commission for their bipartisan opposition to HB 1024. Their nearly unanimous opposition displays their recognition that each town should regulate their own zoning because of the uniqueness of each municipality. Our town has the right and the responsibility to its citizens to regulate the zoning rules to best fit our community. It was good to see that most members have a clear understanding of this and oppose such an overreaching bill.
Next one is from Joan Co., Board of Selectmen Meeting, March 22nd, 2021. At the March 8th, 2021 Board of Select meeting, both Deputy Selectmen Sean Ascom and Selectman Chris Peterson suggested that the budget reflects the expectations of the residents to justify an increase in spending. Then it was stated that the residents don't vote or keep abreast of the government affairs. So how does Selectmen know what their expectations are? Government should provide services for health and safety of the residents, not the vocal few interest groups and their demands which drive the increase in budget. However, there are residents who vote and reelect their selectmen. This year, Simsbury had an increase in development with all new apartments developed and or scheduled to be developed. Big Y Market, home sales, and solar panels that increased the town's revenue in the grand list. The grand list will generate approximately 2.7 million in new tax revenue. Real estate comprised 1.55% increase with the construction of new apartments in the Big Y Market. Personal property increased by 17.9% made of new growth driven from the Tobacco Valley Solar Project and the expansion of Carolif. Motor vehicles increased by 6.72%. The difference between budgeted tax collection rate of 98.5% and the anticipated tax collection rate of 99.5% is an additional projected revenue of $882,549. Millions of dollars will be coming from the state and federal governments. More developments are in the pipeline. The town has an opportunity to reduce expenditures in the budget. Those taxpayers can realize the pot of gold with lower taxes and a reduced mill rate. The COVID pandemic has created a society, including Simsbury, with long-term mental health issues, substance abuse, increase in family violence, children with developmental issues, and psychiatric issues needing immediate attention. The police are called for welfare checks on suspected people with suicidal thoughts. Special needs students have regressed during the COVID pandemic that will require long-term intervention. The police are called for families with children, spouses, and partners that are living under stressful situations. On February 28th, 2021, a 40-year-old male died from an overdose in Simsbury with a history of addiction. There are homeless people in Simsbury in need of help. Where are these issues being addressed in the budget? The town budgeted at a consultant at $22,000 for the Spirit Council to study diversity and no money for mental health. Where are the town referrals for long-term care and family intervention? The Simsbury Fire Department vaccinated their constituents and the Board of Education provided vaccines to the teaching staff in Simsbury. When is the town going to provide a location in Simsbury where town residents and town employees can receive the COVID vaccination? Capital expenditure budget reflects in addition to the Latimer Lane School with a price tag of $36 million. It appears the facility study did not produce scenarios that were fought changes in the educational delivery services and the move of the sixth grade to the junior high. The Board of Education promoted, in addition to the junior high, at $23.9 million before the facility study was initiated. The facility study should have been priority one, which would have reduced wasteful spending. After the facility study was completed, the Board of Education could have promoted, in addition to the junior high, incorporating sixth grade as part of the renovation and complete the task in phase one in one phase. With the elimination of sixth grade in the military schools, Board of Education should have consolidated some of the schools under one roof, producing an economy of scale. This would lower the overhead costs and reduce redundancies in the inventories which would provide, while providing the same educational needs to more students under one roof. The Latimer Lane School should be removed from the capital expenditure budget until a comprehensive study is done addressing the sixth grade transition into the junior high and the consolidation of the elementary schools. Included in the capital expenditures is the purchase of the Meadowwood Land in conjunction with the land trust that will pay for the additional cost if they can raise the money for the project. The taxpayers are asked to support a $2.6 million project for the land that has been vacant for years and produces 200,000 a year in revenue. The plan of development does not support this purchase. An additional infrastructure costs and overhead expenses have not been presented. The development of the land reflects 88 homes for affordable housing that would be eliminated. Town manager Maria Capriola continues to promote affordable housing while eliminating it in the Meadowwood Open Space Acquisition. What a hypocrite. I would like to report to the Board of Selectmen that the Police Commission is reviewing the vandalized Foot Locker investigation in conjunction with my citizen complaint. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter, Joan Co., and Facebook. Joan Co.
This next email is from Sarah Bachelder. I'm writing in response to the zoning commission's decision to oppose the state legislation regarding increasing affordable housing in our community and others across the state, SB 1024. At, and this is addressed to the Simsbury Zoning Commission. At your meeting on March 12th, I watched the meeting last Friday and thought most members were being defensive rather than open to exploring ways we can do things better. You stated that our zoning laws are not the reason that few people of color live in town. Zoning laws are not the only factor affecting the racial makeup of Simsbury, but they are certainly one factor. Restricted zoning makes it difficult for people with lower income of any ethnicity to find housing here and enjoy the amenities that we all enjoy: schools, parks, natural beauty, open spaces. We do have many homes in town that meet the threshold to be called affordable based on the median income of Simsbury residents, which is much higher than the median income in Hartford County. But practically, these homes are still not affordable for many low-income working families. You also cited the numerous new multifamily housing developments in town. As I'm sure you are aware, the new developments are luxury apartments. As a senior citizen, I have had numerous friends move to neighboring towns when they sold their four-bedroom Colonials and looked for something smaller because there was nothing affordable in Simsbury. I would like for both the planning and zoning commissions to develop a vision for our town, which includes a vital downtown with mixed-use development and makes racial equity a priority. We need to be exploring how well we are providing housing for people who work in local businesses, young people just starting out, older people who want to downsize, and young families who want their children to attend Simsbury's excellent schools. We need to be open to new ideas, not just complying with 830G. We need to be planning for the future rather than just touting what we already have. Thank you for the work you do and for considering my suggestions.
All right, this next one, I believe is to the zoning commission as well. I hope this email finds you well. I'm going to keep this short as I know how valuable everyone's time is. I'm a lifelong resident of Simsbury. My parents were born and raised in Hartford and they have worked hard through life's challenges to achieve success. My family has owned a small manufacturing business for over 40 years. We currently have three generations working. I'm reaching out today to share my appreciation for everything Simsbury's elected officials do for our town. I'm especially grateful to the zoning commission for their decisions to follow the regulations currently approved by our local government. I completely agree with the decision made by the zoning commission on 3/12/21 to not support any overreach by the state of Connecticut to change local zoning laws. We cannot allow the state to dictate how we will manage our town zoning. One size does not fit all. These proposed bills have arbitrary numbers and percentages that are not supported by any evidence. This lack of empirical data highlights that the ultimate goal is to de-segregate Simsbury cannot be accomplished through SB 1024 or similar bills. In closing, I truly believe we are making a difference to be inclusive and welcoming town. I welcome the opportunity to share my state, my share, share my statement and please feel free to share my support of our town's position to oppose SB 1024. Thank you. Tammy, Eric, help me out here. Whoa.
Wachowski.
Wachowski, thank you. Sorry.
And I'm going to struggle with this next name, so I apologize if I get it wrong. This next email is from Cynthia Kieswetter. I'm writing to congratulate our Simsbury Zoning Commission for their bipartisan opposition to HB 1024. Their nearly unanimous opposition displays their recognition that each town should regulate their own zoning because of the uniqueness of each municipality. Our town has the right and the responsibility to its citizens to regulate the zoning rules for our community.
All right, next one. Dear Board of Selectmen, I'm writing as a patron, mother of three young, mother of three young library patrons, and a member of the Library Board of Trustees in support of both the 2021-22 library budget requests. The $8,100 requested to restore children's reference material is crucial as it supports our school curricula and invests in the future of our young Simsbury residents. The $5,760 request as part of the library's technology replacement plan is also imperative as many residents rely on the technology services for many uses, including employment and business needs. With my, with full understanding that this is a time when financial resources are limited, I thank you for your consideration in this matter. Sincerely, Heather Gottes, Simsbury Library Board of Trustees.
This next email is from Nicholas Crisitelli, and it's addressed to the Simsbury Zoning Commission. I'm writing today deeply dismayed and disappointed in the conduct of the zoning commission during the March 12th special meeting. The initial content of the draft letter in opposition of SB 1024 had abhorrent, dog-whistling racist language, reverse gentrification, and undesirable urban housing being plopped into our suburban neighborhoods from what was readable on the Zoom call. That transparent fear mongering is unacceptable, and while opinion was removed from the letter, the underlying sentiments remained. We moved to Simsbury last year, and chief among our concerns was the lack of diversity in the town. To hear members of the commission stating that Simsbury's done enough to fight racism and that we are welcoming to ethnics, to hear the tokenization of people of color who've achieved positions in our town government, to say zoning is not at fault for blacks not wanting to come here is ignorant and disrespectful to those people of color in this region who've lived the realities which you sugar-coated in your meeting. All of it validates the concerns we had in choosing Simsbury. Major problem during the meeting was the prevailing sentiment from this commission that they, they agree, something needs to be done, but this still doesn't do it, and predictably offered no changes or alternative solutions. Also, the claiming of affordable housing approval for the Meadowwood project that was forced upon you by a court as proof the existing local regulations are sufficient is as strong an argument for the other side of the issue as can be made. It's quite literally the poster child held up as a prime example by those working to solve this issue statewide. I'm unabashedly in support of SB 1024 and similarly HB 6611. And if you are not, then we need to hear alternatives to how the commission intends to facilitate diversity and inclusion among residents and housing stock. The zoning commission's rhetoric on Friday was alienating and not representative of countless Simsbury residents who genuinely do want this to become an inclusive town.
All right, this next one is addressed to zoning as well. Dear Commissioner Ryan, I'm writing to express my disappointment in language used and comments made during the special meeting to discuss SB 1024 on March 12th, 2021. The initial draft of the letter, which I believe was written by you, had distinct racial undertones. I was relieved that members of the commission recommended alternative language for sections of the letter. I hope that you took note and will be more thoughtful in the future, both in the letter and comments made by the commission members presented the viewpoint that solution advocates are demanding major changes to land use regulation because it's alleged that single-family zoning is a major cause of racial segregation. This is not alleged. The credible research with evidence to back up the claim is readily available. It appeared to some members of the commission were excusing Simsbury because quite a few multifamily unit, units have been built during the last 10 years. However, the majority of these units are not affordable, which was mentioned by a commission member. Comments mentioning two individuals who found homes in Simsbury, the one, that one of those individuals is now a member of a town commission and that Simsbury is diverse enough with only a few black people smacked of tokenism. The idea that because of these individuals, there are no barriers for black or brown people who want to live in Simsbury, and we are doing just fine. We are not. I recognize that addressing affordable housing for Simsbury is complex and the timeline for comments on SB 1024 was too short. I hope the zoning commission is willing to reach out to local and statewide organizations who are advocating for change and be open to their viewpoints. Comments at the end of the meeting seem to show that the commission recognizes that Simsbury has more work to do, but I would prefer to see the sentiment conveyed in the letter. As a town, I believe we can do better and also preserve what we love about this, about the town, especially open space and the New England flavor of the town. Sincerely, Susan Von Cleff.
This next email comes from Ellen Naughton. Dear members of the Simsbury Zoning Commission, today I watched a replay of the March 12th meeting regarding SB 1024 and was so disturbed by the cavalier use and apparent acceptance of racist attitudes and language during the meeting. I'd like to remind members of the town resolution passed a few months ago that declared it will work to become an equity and justice-oriented organization by continuing to identify specific activities and policies to enhance diversity and to ensure anti-racism principles across our leadership, staffing, and contracting. I interpret this as a directive that everyone working on behalf of Simsbury strives to adhere to these values in actual practice, not just on paper. It was disheartening to witness the one member attempting to focus on equity and inclusivity as a legitimate factor to consider, be summarily dismissed by the chair. I do not feel equipped to opine on the details of the bill and what it would or would not accomplish. However, despite assertions to the contrary, it seems well-established that local zoning laws have historically perpetuated segregation in Connecticut. And as such, zoning is a logical place to look for solutions. Generally speaking, I am all in favor of maintaining local control whenever possible, but it requires those in control to recognize when there is a problem. I would be more supportive of Simsbury's opposition to the bill if the zoning commission accepted that local zoning regulations may have the perhaps unintended consequence of being exclusionary and had the desire to address it. It sounds like the meeting was last minute and there was little time for members to prepare or consider options and implications. I hope the commission takes time to reflect on the issue that SB 1024 purports to address and commits to exploring how Simsbury zoning regulations might be reformed to the benefit of all of us.
All right, the next one is to the zoning commission as well. Dear zoning commission, I'm writing today in response to the abhorrent and excusable behavior and language that I witnessed from the zoning commission during a special meeting held on Friday, March 12th, 2021. Especially noted was the language and behavior of the chair. Not only was this meeting called with proper, was this meeting called with proper notice or preparation for commission members, but it seems that its entire purpose was to approve a race-baiting-filled letter drafted by the chair opposing proposed legislation in Bill SB 1024 without any objection to such letter, only looking for voices of support rather than a true discussion on the matter. Watching an elected commission member be summarily dismissed while attempting to voice opposition or alternate viewpoints, and then not allowing for comment on what other language might be included from the commission member was quite honestly disgusting. The discussions surrounding ADUs is dated and dismissive and sitting on laurels of it's the way we've always done it. It smacks of not my backyard attitudes, which is not a way towards growth and inclusion for our town. As a parent of an adult with lifelong, with a lifelong disability, this is an issue of great importance to me, as it should be for our town officials. I am not as concerned about my neighbors' opinions as much as I am about the safety and dignity of the possibility of living independently within my dwelling for my adult child, who by remaining in Simsbury would be a tax-paying consumer for our town. Without even considering the expansion of the current ADU guidelines, this commission is being very shortsighted. When Ms. Knoll asked the commission, who are the residents of our community? She was referencing the disabled community, who is most often left out of conversations and equations, and most importantly, left out of the discussion on what affects them most. Quality of life is for all in our community is what we should be striving for, but we fall very short of all in our community, and that is a zoning issue, something you attempted to thwart often during this meeting. Touting all the ways that Simsbury does a great job and using two single black women in our town as an example of what great, what a great job we are doing. Now, it was not only mind-boggling, but quite honestly disgusting. The racist and dog-whistling language about reverse gentrification, undesirable urban housing being plopped into our suburban neighborhoods, and the natural inclination for people to want to live near people like them had me checking my calendar to see what year this was. Outdated tropes are unacceptable in this time. People like them would also put my child in the setting that he doesn't belong and claiming that a lot has changed over the years is simply not true when you look at the demographics of our town. Having a concern for local control is one thing, and the main concern of this bill for the commission, but the simple, but simply objecting to its entirety without proposing alternative solutions or options is frankly reactionary and lazy. Make change. There was an opportunity to support part of the bill while objecting to other parts and giving alternatives and viable options that was missed. And this is not what I expect from elected leaders. I am saddened and angered by what I witnessed in this meeting. We as a community need to do better. We deserve better. Diversity and inclusion are beneficial to all. Sincerely, Diana Isley.
Okay, now this final email comes from April and Michael Smith. We do not approve of low-income housing to be built wherever the state feels they want to is the object to empty out the cities. The state wants to do away with zoning committees and plunk multifamily housing. We've been paying high taxes up the wazoo for decades, and this could ruin our investment in our home. Not pleased with this idea at all. So appreciate everybody who wrote to us tonight in our public audience. We have one more presentation tonight. This is from Aquarian Water on irrigation restrictions coming this summer. And I'll just introduce the presenters. George Logan is Director of George Logan is Director of Community Relations. Peter Physikas, Director of Communications and Jeff Ulrich. Vice President of Supply Operations and Sustainability for Aquarian. Thank you all for being with us tonight.
Oh, it's our pleasure. And thank you for the opportunity. So I guess I'll leave control to you guys, right? And I'll just advance the slides. As we get going, I'm listening to the conversation just FYI, my. My brother Hector and his wife Isabel, they live in Simsbury on old Florence Village Road. Two of his kids graduated from Simsbury High School and his daughter Kayla is a sophomore at Simsbury High School on the track team. They got married at the, I don't know if it's still around, but the Simsbury Inn.
Of course.
Yeah, 10 years ago, great location. And they love Simsbury. That's right. Alright, second slide. Let's see. That is a picture of our barge reservoir in Stamford in Fairfield County. And I'm going to provide a review of 2020. And that's going to fit into where we're going in terms of water conservation and in terms of what we're looking to do in Simsbury. Next slide, please. U.S. drought monitor. This is readily available for folks, but if you look at last year towards the late summer, early fall. We're looking at parts of Connecticut and if you take a look up there right in the Simsbury area. We're experiencing an extreme drought. Fairfield County was abnormally dry. The entire state was at some level of drought. So we were really focused on that and paying attention to that. We started the year. Looking well in terms of capacity for our reservoirs, but then the number of days and the amount of rainfall. Was below average as the year progressed. Go on to the next slide, please. Now keep this moving so we can get to Simsbury. So Greenwich, why are we talking about Greenwich? Well, we look at Greenwich, May through August of last year. Greenwich, if you look at the the axis over to the left there, the rainfall, those little red bars. In terms of inches and to the right is the number of days of rain. If you look at 2020, all the way to the right. We had low rainfall. Particularly when you compare to 2016, which was clearly a severe drought condition throughout Fairfield County and most of the state. And you take a look at 2020, we had less rainfall in 2020. And we had a lower amount in terms of days of rainfall, which is also very important than we did in 2016. Next slide, please. So really quickly, the highlight here, if you look at the middle column, it says SWSC. That's for the Southwest Fairfield County demand. What I want you to focus on is 2016. We had just over as far as demands, just over 38 million gallons per day for that portion of the state and demands. And in 2020, because of conservation efforts. We were able for the same time period to have just under 34 million gallons per day. So we believe we were able to have an effect in terms of the amount of water that we used in the system with again. We had less rainfall, less days of rain in 2020 than we did in 2016. And yet we still showed a difference where we were able to bring down, we believe through water conservation efforts. Demands by four and a half million gallons per day. Next slide, please. So water conservation. So we've already started down this road. Southwest Fairfield County demands, Southwest Regional Pipeline Expansion. We're looking to bring water from different parts of. You know, of our supply and service areas to areas of need, particularly Fairfield County. Stream flow regulations, new regulations by the state of Connecticut. We're looking at 10 years out, looking at a loss of 15 million gallons per day. Because we are going to be required to release more water for stream flow releases into local streams and rivers. So that's going to result in a loss of supply that's utilized that can be utilized for portable drinking and fighting fires. So between that, between climate change issues and changing weather patterns and. These flash droughts that we're experiencing, water conservation is extremely important. Next slide, please. So just really quickly, if you take a look at Connecticut, the single family customer water use, we did an analysis where we took a look at. You know, the average for single families nationwide is more like 83 gallons per capita per day. The median is about 62. So Connecticut, single families is below the U.S. average. Of domestic 88 gallons per capita per day, right? So we're looking at the national average of 88, excuse me, I'm the average here, Connecticut 83. But the top 1% of single families, top 1% averaged 693 gallons per capita per day. That's eight times higher than the U.S. average, right? So that 1%, the highest account averages four, we're whopping almost 5,000 gallons per capita per day. Compared to the, again, U.S. average domestic 88 and here in Connecticut for single families, 83. So a huge difference, difference. So the bottom of 50% average about 37 gallons per capita per day. Which is about a third of the U.S. average. Now, we say a third, again, we're talking about small, single families compared to folks that perhaps live in suburban areas like. We do and others that live in areas where we have large properties in terms of lot size, in terms of square footage, in terms of their homes, in terms of. Their lawns and et cetera. Over to the next slide. So the study that we conducted finds that most customers are water efficient, right? Everyone has in their homes efficient washers and dryers and nozzles and our showers. So most customers are water efficient. A small number of users though, in each customer class are very large users. Outdoor water use offers a large potential for savings. Because we have folks that are irrigating larger areas of land. Many folks, we feel are overdoing it in terms of irrigation. So we think conservation efforts should be focused on. Very high and high users in each customer class. Over to the next slide, please. So here's a graph, a lot of stuff on the graph here, but if you take a look at the left side. And the left axis there talks about the average account in terms of gallons per day. So it's gallons per day on the left side. And on the right side is the percent water demands of accounts and that's the green bar you see there. So let's take a look at the bar to the left side. You see the red indicates gallons per day of outdoor use. And the blue represents indoor. So if you take a look at the average of all single families over to the left. You'll see that the average single family in terms of outdoor use, gallons per day, uses on average about 51 gallons per day. Indoor use is about 145. So that total is about 200 gallons per day. That's the average overall. But if you look at the top 1%, single family, top 1%. Single families, these are most likely, you know, three, four acre lots, you know, or greater, larger mansions. That top 1%, they use almost 600 gallons per day for outdoor use. And 451 gallons for indoor use. Again, compare that to the average on the left there for single families. So you're looking at well, you know, over 1,000 gallons per day compared to 200. So now let's take a look at different groupings. There's a top 10%, they're using over 500 gallons per day. Well, look at the top 25%. If you look at the top 25% of all single families. The top 25% now jump up to the green line. You see that 50%? The top 20% are using 50% of all the water demands that we have as far as average. So the top 25% are using 50% of the water and so on and so forth. So we have, you know, based on data, based on analysis, have decided that. We need to focus on water conservation overall. Everyone plays a part. But also to focus and look at those large users. Let's advance the next slide. Hopefully that was clear in describing that slide. We'll take questions towards the end. So we have instituted twice weekly irrigation policy. Using Dallas, Texas program as a model and what that entails is two days per week maximum. And we divide it out in terms of even addresses, two days a week and odd addresses, two other days a week. Applies to automatic and barrier irrigation systems. It applies to hose sprinklers. It doesn't apply to handheld watering or drip irrigation or even soaker hoses. And there is a variance process. So for example, if you just recently had some landscaping work done on your property. Or you had some major plantings done and you need to water more than twice a week, there is a variance process available. So we're obviously not going to be unreasonable about it. So there are options there as well for those folks. Next slide, please. Twice weekly irrigation, outdoor water use proves a lot, largest potential for savings. Irrigation is becoming pervasive, you know. We know that with two days per week watering, grass will survive and we would actually argue you will have healthier grass. If you water only twice per week, because then the roots will grow down lower to try to get that water, your grass will be even healthier. And also, top everything else, it's just the right thing to do in this day and age, water conservation. We also, it's important to reduce the potential for future droughts by, you know, saving water, right? Customer education will be required. That's partly what we're doing today and probably what we do in terms of our communications. And in many cases, enforcement, you know, is required in terms of letting people know that we're serious about this. So in some cases, rules, laws may be required in many instances, we've had towns assist with that with local organizations. Next slide, please. And from our experience, you know, over 2 billion gallons of water have been saved over the last three years with an exclamation point, you know. So we are very proud and happy of that, folks pitching in. And so now we're expanding our twice weekly irrigation program. And Simsbury and the Simsbury area water systems are now included there. Next slide. So Simsbury, water conservation. We're looking at implementing the twice weekly irrigation schedule for 2021. Beginning April 1st through October. We, Aquarian, will be working hard and working with you all in terms of communications to residents about the new requirements. Postcard mailings, newsletters, reminder stories, you know, traditional television, streaming. I had Peter Physikas recently tell me what OTT stands for, called over the top. You know, and that has to do with things like you're streaming like Hulu, you know, lots of folks are using Hulu and other streaming services, so placing ads there. Print, digital advertising, social media, emails. I mean, we're going to go all out in terms of trying to get the message out. Where we have a meeting, for example, in April, where we meet with irrigation professionals to let them know what's going on. And what their part and role of it is. Monthly conservation letters to high users, right? So we're focusing on those folks, making sure that they know that they play a big role. In water conservation and also system water demands are tracked on our Aquarian website as well. Next slide, please. I know we're in a time crunch here. We're almost there. I think we're getting close. So Simsbury water conservation, you will see advertisements such as the one that you see there before you helping to explain to folks. A little bit of background on why we're doing it, a little bit of background in terms of the time period. And helping folks so they can comply with it as well. Next slide, please. And in summary, so we need to plan on significantly varying conditions, right? From season to season and from year to year with dramatic swings in weather conditions. More frequent, we were calling extreme weather and flash droughts where, for example, I described last year in 2020. Started off, reservoirs were filling. Towards the middle of the year, rain days were less than what were expected. Rainfall was less, but then all of a sudden in November, December, we had a surge precipitation. And it helped us to sort of climb out of it. But drought, as we all know, is not just a one season event, right? It's a long, multi-month, multi-year type of situation. So we are not out of the woods yet. Increased weather events will require more adaptability to maintain water quality and service. Just think about this. Every gallon saved is water that does not need to be pumped, treated and delivered, right? So you can either try to find additional sources, right? We should know how difficult that is, or we can conserve and try to save water. Conservation also, there's an effect to one's pocketbook as far as your residents and all of us. Conservation helps slow the rise of water rates over the long term. You're not trying to find new sources that you have to treat and pump and deliver. So water conservation is good for the environment. It's good for our home and family budget and finances as well. Outdoor water use provides the largest potential for savings, as I discussed earlier, and irrigation is a big part of it. Twice weekly irrigation beginning April 1st through October, but we need to make sure that folks are aware of what's going on and what we're trying to do. We talked about enforcement, there's a variance process and again, I think we end off on a high note. Water conservation is the right thing to do. Next slide, please. And now we'll just take. Any questions? And I have Peter Physikas on the line as well and Jeff Ulrich, Vice President as well, to help out with any questions that I may not be able to answer.
If I could, I would just mention one thing. When George went through the slides on Southwest Fairfield County. The one big difference from 2016 drought and the 2020 drought. Is in 2016, we had to put out a total outdoor water ban, which impacted lots of outdoor businesses. With our conservation program in 2020. Obviously, things were getting just as bad, but we were able to limit it to just an outdoor irrigation ban at the end of the year and actually in October. But we were able to allow all the other businesses to function as normal. So we were able to save enough water with our conservation program to do that, which is less disruptive to the to the community.
Well, I thank you for the presentation and being with us tonight. Personally, I'm very supportive of these conservation efforts. I know one thing that I don't think was mentioned in this is that last summer Simsbury was an outlier in the amount of per capita water use. And when you look at other towns. I wanted to, I got a couple of questions myself, but I did want to open it up from other members of the board to ask.
I have a question. And I'm not sure if you guys can answer this or if Tom, Roy can answer it, but I was just curious as to the number of residents in town that are Aquarian customers versus have their own private wells. Any statistics?
But I think our friends from Aquarian can tell you how many customers they have.
Okay.
Have that information at hand.
Okay.
Good, good number to have. The interesting thing is that Aquarian Water in Simsbury is effectively well water. So we're all using that same aquifer.
So that was the second question. I asked this, I think this summer when we had, you know, the drought issues. Do us well owners or users also follow these same guidelines?
We as Aquarian can't impose that on the private well owners. Some towns have done an ordinance to do, Greenwich does have an ordinance that applies it to their well owners as well. But that's really to the town has to implement that.
Yeah, we have, we have a similar ordinance. Despite some pretty heavy objections from certain members of this board, we. We do have one that applies both to Aquarian and well customers, I believe, right Maria?
And we have reached out to Terrifield Water and also a small, very small percentage of our residents are served by Avon Water. To let them know that this is what Aquarian was doing and encouraging them to possibly take the same action.
Yep.
Yep.
Chris, were you going to drop that?
Thank you for your presentation this evening, gentlemen. So question can be answered by any party. Just clarity, the grid that you showed. 2016 drought, 2018, excuse me, 2020 to bottom. Those in between years. So in 2016. In Greenwich or Southwest Fairfield or wherever you, where the title of that graph was. You did enact in that year, the conservation methods or programs that were pulled in. They were enforced in 17, 18, 19, 20. Is that correct? Okay.
So the first year it went into effect was 2017 and it's been in effect since.
Oh, so only 17 that went into effect?
No, 2000, all years. So it started in 2017 and it's been in effect every year since.
So it was in, it was enforced during that year, those years. Where there was more natural rainfall, which is what then led to your.
where there was more natural rainfall, which is what then led to your, so is the more, is the higher natural rainfall what led simplistically to the lower draw on the system in those middle years? 16, 17, or 17, 18, 19? Pardon me? Is that correct?
It contributed to it. But as you could see, in 2020, we had less rainfall and fewer rain days. And we still use 500 million gallons less than we did in 2016. So the number was higher in those other years. The rainfall definitely contributed to that. But I would, I would say on, you know, on the order of half or more of those savings, probably on your two thirds of those savings were a result of the two day a week watering. And the biggest benefit of the two day a week is even in those wet years, you get the real savings because people are still watering three days a week even during the wet summer. And so you get substantial savings when there is, you know, the savings will go up in a wet year. It is very beneficial in the dry year.
I was curious then, did, were there, you had, you had the program in place, you had the higher rainfall with only two days a week, if you find that actual people were turning, were responding, going an extra mile and actually turning their sprinkler systems off one of those one or two days they couldn't water because it was raining.
I think what we find, and Peter and George feel free to try it, is generally the irrigation contractors, most of them set them at the beginning of the year. And most of the customers won't call them back to make any adjustments or pay for any adjustments, even depending on weather. So if they have a weather based controller, it may, it will definitely take into account the rainfall. But a lot of customers still will keep irrigation systems on two days whether they need it or not.
Thank you, guys. I have a weather based controller. And you're right, I don't know, if it wasn't for YouTube, I wouldn't know how to use my system. Last, so last question around that is, in your flyer, you don't speak to what are, what, you say the hours in there, but can I just water continuously for that entire water, that entire period? How is the, what am I, so how do I know how much to water or not on those two days during those time periods?
Well, the, so the, we don't put a limit on the hours. So there are people that will probably water more because they feel like they have to catch up to some degree. It's really with your irrigation contractor, they've got, they'll set up your zones. And you'll establish how many, how many minutes you need each zone to come up with the timing. But it shouldn't be dramatically different than other years. Essentially, you're trying to water your whole area, your irrigated area. Right now, a lot of people are doing it three times a week. We're just asking you to irrigate the same way, just two days a week.
Okay, that's fair enough. So that's, it's not that restrictive. And I'm almost done. You know, I have eight zones. They go on for 20 minutes each, three times a week, going down to two. But the point is, I'm only really watering for two hours essentially. And so, but in theory, you could water the entire, so we're not boxing people that in that much. To say you can only water a total of two hours during those period of time. So it's up to, it's up to whatever you feel is what for the health of your lawn. It's okay. Thank you.
That's correct. Other questions from the board?
Chris, your lawn still looks like hell no matter what you do, buddy. So sorry. That's a different problem. But we do have a unique corner, and we do have a high percentage of private wells in town. So Wendy, your question was a good one is, is making sure, and we've talked about this extensively, education is really important. So appreciate you guys coming out and sharing this with us, really solid presentation on remembering it's the right thing to do. Not to just use up the water for this, for the sake of it, that whether it's a private well or from your system, it's all coming from the same place. So thanks for coming out, guys.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
You know, Maria and Melissa, I think one thing that might be helpful is to have the presentation as a standalone document somewhere on our website that we can link to, because I think it really tells a nice story for people who have questions. All right. Thank you very, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And looking forward to seeing you around town. Take care now.
You guys are welcome to stay for the budget stuff. It gets real exciting from here if you want to. Have a great night, everybody.
All right, we're going to turn now to my first selectman's report, starting with vaccine, vaccine information. Currently, the state is scheduling vaccines for people who are 45 and older. Eligibility opened on March 19th for people between the ages of 45 and 54. In just a couple of weeks, on April 5th, tentatively, anyone 16 and older can register starting on that day. More information on vaccine eligibility is available on the state's website and the Farmington Valley Health District's website. To register for a vaccine, go to ct.gov/covidvaccine. You can also call 877-918-2224. In an effort to assist residents who are currently eligible to sign up to receive the vaccine, sites within 20 minutes of Simsberry have been compiled. There's also, there's also a list of COVID testing locations. And you can find the link to both of those right on the homepage of the town website under the news section. Starting last Friday, numerous state restrictions have been lifted, including capacity restrictions, restaurants, retail stores, offices, libraries, houses of worship, indoor recreation excluding theaters, gyms and museums. Mask requirements, though, do remain in effect. An update on the town budget, our budget information is aggregated on the town website. And for the second year in a row, Simsberry experienced significant growth in its grand list of nearly 3%. What this growth does is it helps to offset increases in the mill rate. Still, it is a particularly challenging budget year. There is consensus among our budget making boards that any tax increases need to be kept to an absolute minimum. Yet there are significant investments needed for equipment, buildings and personnel, just to maintain the things that we have today. At a time when our region's population has remained flat, our town's population does continue to grow. It's grown about 8% over the past nine years. The Board of Selectmen approved budget would increase the mill rate by 0.67% or less than $5 a month for the median value home. The budget that is sent to referendum, though, is likely to look a little bit different based on changes by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance has asked us to reduce our operating budget between 100 and 150,000, which is a conversation that we're going to have tonight. Two items I want to highlight in the capital budget. The first is the Latimer Lane Elementary renovate as new project and the Meadowwood Open Space Purchase. Both of these projects would need to be approved at referendum in order to move forward. We really encourage public participation in this process, and you can do so this year without leaving your home. All of our meetings are streamed on SCTV's YouTube channel. They're also broadcast on the government channel, Xfinity Channels 96 and 1090, Frontier Channel 6071. If you'd like your comments read at an upcoming meeting, please send them to Erica Butler, ebutler@simsberry-ct.gov. You can also join our meetings and share your comments live with us. You can register with Tom Fitzgerald, tfitzgerald@simsberry-ct.gov. The Board of Finance has tentatively scheduled its public hearing for April 6th at 5:45 PM. And if you'd like your email read at that meeting, please specify that it is for the Board of Finance Budget Hearing. Last item tonight, we invite you to join the Simsberry Aging and Disability Commission in the Simsberry Public Library in collaboration with AARP Connecticut to learn more about maximizing comfort and safety as our needs change with age. This virtual program is scheduled for April 14th at 6 PM. It is free, but registration is required. Visit the library's website and click on virtual programs. I'll turn it over to Maria now for the Town Manager's Report.
Hey, thanks, Eric, and good evening, everyone. First, our virus update. We continue to monitor the state's COVID alert system. We are currently at yellow status. So that indicates that we have more than five, but less than 10 COVID cases per 100,000 residents. Our positive cases for the two week period ending March 13th increased to 8.9 cases per 100,000 residents. That was up from 7.4 cases on March 6th. And our COVID positivity rate for those being tested was up to 1.7%, which was also a slight increase from the week prior. We are currently at 31 positive cases over the most recent two week period. That's an increase from 26 cases with the week prior. Unfortunately, after seeing positive strides and downward trends for six consecutive weeks, this was our first week where we reversed the trend and started to trend upwards again. So just in comparison, the most recent week, we had 23 positive cases and the week prior, we had eight. The Health District has reported that most cases are associated with either household spread, travel, occupational exposures or social gatherings. So they really do encourage us to continue to use mitigation strategies such as mask wearing, social distancing and limiting activities with large groups when possible. Some preliminary data that we have for ending March 14th is reporting that just under 8,000 Simsberry residents have received at least their first dose of the vaccine or about 31% of our population. Just under 96% of people who reside in town who are over the age of 75 have received their first dose. And about 95.6% of those residents between the ages of 65 and 74. The Farmington Valley Health District does continue to successfully vaccinate our school faculty and staff throughout our 10 towns. They have, at this point, vaccinated 2,300 people with at least the first dose of the vaccine. They continue to also run other clinics throughout the Health District for the general population, administering an additional 900 to 1,000 doses a week. As you may recall, beginning April 7th, the Simsberry Public Library will be hosting a weekly clinic on Wednesdays for the Farmington Valley Health. Reporting out on the workforce in our organization, for the month of March, we currently have had one staff member that has been quarantined and three staff members that have tested positive. So again, just a gentle reminder that while all of our services and infrastructure are open and are again are fully operational, our response time for non-emergency situations may be delayed depending on how a department may be impacted by either quarantining cases or positive cases. Quickly, an update on the status of walk-in hours for both Town Hall and the library. We are currently in the process of finalizing expanded walk-in hours for Town Hall, which would occur on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays as expanded hours beginning April 5th. You may also recall that the library beginning tomorrow will be back open until 8 PM on Tuesday evenings. And then beginning the following week, they will be back to their pre-COVID walk-in hours for Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays. So again, we are beginning to again expand those walk-in hours as case numbers come down, as more staff members get vaccinated, et cetera. Again, you know, one of our challenges that we've talked a bit about is that we are maintaining the vigorous coding protocols that have been established by the state for surfaces, restrooms, et cetera. We have a very tiny facility staff. They are working tirelessly. And so what we've been doing is alternating days that both the library and Town Hall are open to the public so that the facilities team can really make sure that they're doing a very, very thorough job for the buildings when they're being visited by our patrons. And just a quick update from social services. As you know, food insecurity and the community has increased quite significantly during the pandemic. They did hold their monthly cheese day program recently. The program assisted 114 households, including deliveries to 29 homebound individuals. They prepared 27 kid-friendly bags and assisted 48 seniors. A few quick news and notes from our departments from Culture Parks and Recreation. Just a reminder that registration is now open for.
I have an appointment and I need to cancel this. Company show.
There you go. Thanks.
So summer camp registration is now open. The day camp program is already full for the summer, but we do have some openings that remain for our sports and enrichment camps. We're also still accepting registrations for swim lessons and the summer pool season. We do expect the golf course to open up on Tuesday, March 23rd. And folks can purchase passes at simsberryfarms.com. And lastly, from Culture Parks and Rec, we do want to just provide a gentle reminder to folks now that the weather is warming up. If you are utilizing our parks or trails, please remember that we have a carry-in, carry-out policy. So if you bring, you know, items with you and you have trash that you need to take with you, please remember to take that with you when you leave, as well as to please also, you know, properly dispose of any pathways that you might have while you're, you're out and about using our facilities. Just a quick note from emergency management. As you know, earlier in the month, we did experience a pretty significant wind, windstorm event. At the height of the storm, we had about 6% of our town without power. That was around 600 customers. We also had several roads that were closed due to block roads. By the afternoon of that same day, the customer outages were down to about 1%. And nearly all of our residents were restored within 36 hours after the storm. This is considerably different than what we had experienced in August. And I just really wanted to say a very big thank you, particularly to Mark Matara from Eversource. We were so fortunate. He was actually assigned to us during this storm. His communication was outstanding. The information he provided was really terrific. He coordinated very, very well with our emergency management team. And just again, really want to thank Mike Berry, Chief Bolter, Tom Roy, Chief Baldus, you know, all of their team members. Everybody just did a really great job this storm. And again, I wanted to send a thank you to all who were involved. And then a couple of announcements from the library. David Beal recently joined the library staff in the children's department. He is a full-time library services assistant. And his background is in both elementary school libraries as well as public libraries. He comes to us with 22 years of experience and was named paraprofessional of the year at Governor William Pickin School. So we're really excited to have David on the library team and just want to welcome him aboard. And lastly, effective today, I'm very happy to announce that Laura Barkowski in our planning department has been promoted from land use specialist to code compliance officer. Laura joined our team in January of 2020, so right before the pandemic, and she's just done a fantastic job for us. We're really glad to have her on board. She holds a bachelor's degree from Western Connecticut State University and has prior municipal experience, having worked in a planning department. She recently completed her wetlands and aquifer protection certifications. And she's begun the process to become a certified zoning enforcement officer. So congratulations to Laura. And that concludes my report this evening.
Very much, Maria. Move on to selectmen action. Reminder, the food insecurity remains very real in our community. We received a very generous donation from the Hartford Federal Credit Union to support our food programs. Is there a motion effective March 22nd, 2021 to accept a donation from the Hartford Federal Credit Union in the amount of $2,000 for the purpose of supporting Simsberry Community and Social Services Department's food programs?
Move that.
Second.
With our thanks, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Item B is tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective March 22nd, 2021 to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $3,796.90 and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
Move that.
Second.
I heard Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, was that Wendy?
Yes, I was.
No, I gave you credit. All right, Wendy's second.
Thank you.
Favor.
Item C is the appointment of Pullman and Comley as bond counsel. Our current bond attorney is moving to a new firm. And since we appoint the firm rather than the individual, we would need to appoint this new firm as bond counsel to retain the attorneys that we've been working with. And it is staff's recommendation that we do so. Maria, is that something that you wanted to briefly elaborate on?
Sure, thank you. Yes. So we've had this happen a few times in recent years. I think at some points with pension council changing firms, labor council changing firms. And Judith, Attorney Blank has been with us for decades. She's really just phenomenal to talk about. Her colleague Glenn will be moving with her as well to the new firm. We've been very pleased with their work and Pullman has agreed to maintain the same fee structure as well. So we would definitely recommend that we continue to utilize Judith at her new firm.
Okay. Other questions? Is there a motion effective March 22nd, 2021 to appoint the firm Pullman and Comley as bond counsel for the town of Simsberry through December 6th, 2021, with the understanding that staff has the option to conduct an RFQ for bond counsel in the future? And also to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the engagement letter once completed?
That. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Close? All right, that motion passes. Item D is proposed revisions to our debt management policy. So this is an update that's recommended to our policy stemming from the budget that we put forth, which calls for a renovate as new project for Latimer Lane Elementary School. Six-year capital plan we put forth will put the town's overall debt service ceiling around 8%. The six-year capital plan we put forth will put the town's overall debt service ceiling around 8% in certain years in order to accommodate this project compared to the approximately 7% where we are today. This is something that the Board of Finance approved at their meeting last week. I wanted to see if there were questions or comments from the board.
I had a question. And honestly, I didn't know there really was a debt management policy. So I hadn't seen it before. So we're moving it to 8%. And I know we had a lot of conversation on the move to 8% that we didn't want that to be the new norm. And that doesn't state anything like that. And I don't know if there's any way to state that. Like, it's just to kind of get through this period. So I just wanted to put that out there to Maria or someone could address that.
Yeah, Wendy, it's a good question, and I was actually thinking the same thing on this item. Is that?
Yeah. Do you have any suggestions or recommendations in terms of maybe how or where in the policy would be best to, you know, work this with something to that effect?
So when we updated the policy, you'll notice that we added language that the Board of Finance will set the rate during the budget season. So if they want to set it at, say, 6.7% for this budget season, they can 7% for next season. Then when we get to that fiscal year '26, which is the impacted year, they can set it at the 8%. And then they can either set it back down, or they can reset their policy back down to a range of, say, 6% to 7%. But what we're trying to avoid is when our auditors and our bond rating agencies ask us every year if we're following our policy, if we just get to that policy and then make the change, that just does not look good. So we are doing it when we're making the decision, and then that way we are in compliance with our policy and we're doing things in accordance with a triple A rated community practice.
Okay. I think that distinction makes sense, Amy.
Eric, I know it's kind of raised my hand.
Of course, Rob.
If it's inappropriate for me to speak, please say so.
Please.
All right. So this was obviously an issue for us, and we wanted to be clear. And I want to give a shout out to Amy for bringing to our attention the point that she just made, which is that the last thing you want to do is ask for forgiveness if you exceed your policy. It's much better to have a policy that would allow you to do something if you saw it coming. To Wendy's question, I think we, on our meeting, and I hope it shows up in the minutes, made it very clear that this is a range, not a resetting of eight from seven. And it's designed specifically to allow large projects that, in order to finance them, could possibly exceed the previous level at 7% for some short period of time. And emphasize what Amy said about that we do have, the Board of Finance retains the right to set the debt service limit on a year-to-year basis within the budget. I would say our target still is 7%, not 8%, but it allows for large projects that will, almost by necessity, create stress on that limit. So I hope that adds some clarification. We had the same exact question and concern at our meeting and addressed it in the words we think are in the language, so.
Yeah. Thanks, Rob. Appreciate that. Other questions or comments from the board before we move forward? Okay. Is there a motion effective March 22nd, 2021, to approve the proposed revisions to the debt management policy as presented?
Move that.
I'll second it. Wendy.
Yes, I heard you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item E, we have three public works job descriptions that the Personnel Subcommittee reviewed and approved. And we were asked to, if this group is supportive tonight, that would allow Tom and his team to start hiring for these positions. Were there any questions from the board after looking at these documents?
Standard updates.
Yeah. Yeah. So again, no changes to salaries, just looking at positions that haven't been updated. And, you know, I want to stay close to a couple of decades at least, and using, you know, more modern references to, you know, what the job actually entails. Anything you would add, Tom?
No, I think you hit it perfectly. This is just updating very dated job descriptions and just reflecting the work that's actually going to be done. Absolutely no change in pay rates. This is just getting us squared up for some new hires.
Okay. Is there a motion effective March 22nd, 2021, to revise the senior mechanic, truck driver mechanic, and the truck driver job descriptions as presented?
Second.
That was Jackie. I saw your lips move. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And our final item tonight is the fiscal year '21-'22 budget discussion. So coming out of our presentation to the Board of Finance nearly a week ago, their ask of us was to try to reduce our operating budget between $100 and $150,000. And one item that was highlighted was increasing our assumptions around building permit revenue, increasing that number by $125,000. Let's just start with that item for discussion, and then we can see if there are also other thoughts on other items that people wanted to discuss. I personally feel comfortable with that recommendation, looking at both what we know is coming and also looking at historically what's happened over the past five or so years. Were there others who wanted to weigh in?
Yeah. Eric, this is Sean. I agree with it. And Rob, thank you for pointing that out that we probably needed to go back and look at that number again. So we often focus a lot on the expenditure side, and that was a good one to point out on the revenue side. So appreciate that.
But since you called my name, I raise my hand one more time.
Rob, yes.
I want to be clear that whereas we included that you could make amendments to revenues in our request, the specific request was to look for items of expense that you might also be willing to reduce. And we were willing to consider. I don't think anybody on our board expected this to be fully done by raising the permit revenue. And so I hope before you get done with your discussion this evening that you take some of the serious considerations and examples or suggestions that we gave to you from board members into consideration along with an adjustment in the permit revenue. Just want to be sure you understood that that was what we really intended to send as a message. Since you invited us to our meeting, you opened yourself up to this, but.
It's very helpful to have members of the Board of Finance with us.
It is.
I genuinely mean it.
Very helpful.
Well, so Wendy.
Well, I was gonna, I had a couple ideas, but if you want to kick off, Eric, with some too, that's fine.
Okay. Well, the one that I wanted to bring up was we, our budget calls for an increase in the legal expenses by $25,000. And I would be comfortable with lowering, you know, keeping that number flat in this budget.
Am I wrong? Didn't we already cut that back to flat?
No.
So we talked about that at the hearing.
We talked about it. We, yeah, we did. But we didn't cut it. So I'd be in agreement with that with Eric.
Okay.
I would too.
Amy, can you just confirm that?
Yeah, I'll take a look.
I don't want to double-cut something.
Yep. And Wendy, what were you going?
Yeah. So I wanted to bring up a couple of things. Jackie brought up on Wednesday night our budget workshop, and I had brought up part of it on the Saturday, and that's around the 110 CNR items that were coming out of the general fund. Jackie had asked if we could potentially repurpose those out of another fund. And I had asked about the notch road for TAR, and that wasn't the acceptable use of that. But I'd like to revisit taking that 110 and moving it, taking it out of capital reserves so that in addition to the revenue increase, with that and what other other ideas there are, we could have a bigger impact on the taxpayer. And I don't know, Maria, you could address if, you know, we're still in an acceptable position to take that 110 out of capital reserves.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly could take that out of capital reserve. You know, the downside is, is that would mean that we've officially stripped away all of our, if you will, excess cash capacity for smaller capital purchases, which then just means in out years, you know, we're essentially bonding for items or again, having to make, you know, harder choices or hoping that we have enough in the capital reserve. You may recall some number of years ago, but I think we're up to about 1.7 million in cash to use towards smaller, you know, capital items and CNR items. And, you know, that's been slowly, slowly, you know, chopped away at. So yes, I mean, it's certainly an option, but it just, you know, may create other, you know, challenges for us down the road. You know, in some cases where we've taken away that cash capacity, we've been bonded for things, right? So that increases debt service in a year. So those are just sort of some things to think about. But it could be done.
I wanted to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Now, before we move on, I thought it could be helpful just to see if there is consensus on this item or if others are not supportive, just to.
Or concerned, yeah.
See where we're at. Chris, Sean, Jackie?
Well, you're moving from one pot to another, and you're just changing the impact in a year. It doesn't.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, it lowers it by a bit this year, but it potentially puts it into the, it puts the operating budgets in play in the future.
So what I, yeah, what I mean, I hear is we're not making it, I mean, that's, that does not necessarily, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that necessarily accomplishes what Mr. Palmeroy and his team have asked us to do. It's not an extent, it's actually not a reduction of expenses. You know, reduction of expenses to me is we buy, you know, we start buying one less case of something. We take away a body. We don't fund something. That, I mean, that's fair, right? So I don't know that we're really accomplishing that with some of the things we've talked about so far. Rob, is that what you're asking for? You're truly asking.
So there is an element of this, though, Chris, and this is, we have just about every year, which is, you know, I think, I think as we come into the end of the year, there are, as outlined in your book, expected savings from the budget in several categories. And some of those items, as we get down to the end of the year, could be used to purchase some of the items on the CNR. And we seem to do that just about every year, and that's not a bad thing. But if you don't plan for that, then you leave that option, and you don't take anything out of next year's CNR because you were able to pay for it out of the June surplus, then you're going to tax the taxpayers next year for more items. And the tax rate will be, the mill rate will be based on that. Now, if you identify some of these things that could be transferred to this year from next year and don't replenish them with others, that's the other way that this gets done, is that things that got cut from the list to CNR get put back in next year, and so the taxes are what the taxes are. So we're both right in this. You're right. It doesn't, unless you actually shift it from one year to this year and then don't spend that money next year, it has the same impact. So there are two things you can do. You can shift it from one year to the other year and not spend it next year, or you can shift it from one year to this year, which is what we will likely do, and then spend more next year because you're going to tax the taxpayers for it. And we have this conversation, argument, discussion almost every year about, you know, should you pay me now for what we think we might need, or should we wait and see if we really need it? And there are some of us that are advocates of, you know, when you really need it, then we'll tax you for it. And there's others who say it gives us the flexibility. We don't know exactly what the savings will be. And so, you know, the Board of Finance's bias is to defer and not, you know, to try to make sure that we don't end up spending any more as a result of having good performance one year to the next. I think the Board of Selectmen's bias is sort of always, well, give us the flexibility, and if we can, we'll put more things on the list. And that's not a good thing or a bad thing. I'm not, there's no, not trying to put a qualitative aspect to it. But that is, that's the perpetual discussion about this time every year.
Yep. No, you're right, Rob. The only thing I'll say is, while we don't know, and I don't think we still have any more certainty, right, Maria and Amy, on the federal money, is if we do shift it to the capital reserve fund, does that increase or decrease our flexibility in how we think that money might come in? Is it better to leave it in operating? Or is it better to move it to the capital reserve, Amy and Maria?
Personally, I think it should just stay where it is. So for the new money, the only thing that we've definitely been told is that it can't supplant the budget directly or indirectly. So we had put it in our budget, and then we took it out because we think we're going to get federal money. I think that's kind of an indirect supplant, so I wouldn't do that.
Okay, that's helpful. Wendy, were there other items you wanted to raise?
No, no, I was looking at, you know, we talked a little about the stimulus money, but that's not coming. And if we use that for any, like, you know, the funds, the outside agencies, then they're out of the budget, right? So we then, we don't want to take it out of the budget because then next year will be harder to put it back in. That was the only other thing I was thinking of seeing if we could use it for those items.
I think that's what Amy just said we can't do, right?
Okay. Were there?
So Chris had mentioned operating. Are there any operating costs? Is there any, are there any items that we can take off the list?
I mean, we did add things.
We did. And I know we added a new position.
So I'm not suggesting this, but it's something that we could do this year to bring a small degree of mill rate relief would be to, you know, phase the hiring of that position in, so to delay the parks position, for example, until halfway through the year. Again, I'm not suggesting it, but that's something that we, that's a lever we do have.
So I want to let people know that Lisa is not able to join us this evening, which is unfortunate because her brother has contracted COVID, is in a serious, in the hospital. So I feel compelled to share with you some of the things that she had suggested, and I know she'd sent these on to the Board of Selectmen. But things like police dispatch, engineering, public works, there were several suggestions that I think she forwarded to Eric or Wendy or others for consideration. So because she feels so compassionately about this whole process and is more invested in it than anybody I know, I feel compelled to share those with you without prejudice either way. But I hope that you received her emails and would consider those as you look at, you know, all things you do. And in the end, even though the mill rate adjustment may be acceptable this year, the more we can do this year, we are still fighting a steep uphill battle with pensions and with capital and everything else. And as we said at our meeting and your meeting, we have to take a longer view of this. And so everything we can do to keep a budget in line when we can makes it easier next year. And the budget is still a substantial increase over last year, notwithstanding the increase in the grand list, which helps offset it. But so I'll just, I'll leave it at that and leave it to you guys.
And this is Linda. Could I add, I also had made some suggestions to, in a conversation with Amy, and some of them echoed the list Rob just gave from Lisa. But in addition, I suggested, and this isn't truly a cut, but rather a restatement, but in my conversation with Amy, it looked like there might be room to reduce some of the salary lines in recognition that you do have vacancies that go unfilled. And those, you know, people are budgeted as though they're all going to be there for 12 months a year. And, you know, that's never the truth in any employer location. location. And, uh, so she was going to look into some possibilities there as well.
Yeah.
So to, just to be clear, I, I don't have, and I'm not aware of an email from, from Lisa. I have, I have suggestions from Amy. But I have nothing from Lisa.
I, I never got anything from Lisa, but you know, went through Linda's, you know, I actually didn't get Linda's either. We got Linda's via.
Via.
Right? So I didn't, you know, I didn't, I don't have it.
At, at our board of finance meeting, we had, I thought, said we would funnel it all through Amy.
Yeah. Yep. No, I got, we got. I, I think, Linda, and if, uh, Maria is better to respond, but I don't think we're in a position to tell you what the right vacancy calculation for any of the departments is. Um, we could, I mean, we could take a guess at it at this point, but I think that requires a deeper analysis. Maria, is that right?
Yeah, correct. So I, you know, I think just based on the size of our police department and sort of what we're knowing and learning there. Um, you know, perhaps in the future, budgeting a vacancy rate may be appropriate. Um, I think it may have been suggested for public works. Um, you know, there's normally very little turnover, um, in that department. So probably, um, that, you know, would not make sense to, to look at a vacancy rate. Um, similarly for the library, we typically don't have a lot of turnover, um, within the full-time positions. Uh, we do at times have quite a bit of turnover in the part-time positions, but then those are positions that we backfill because they're direct service positions, meaning that we're backfilling those shifts with other part-timers. So again, I think probably the library and public works would not necessarily, you know, be suitable for budgeting any sort of vacancy rate. Um, again, perhaps I think police, that is something, right, that, that we shared with you all that I thought, you know, would make a lot of sense. Um, the chief has begun that analysis, but it really is a rather complex analysis and it, you know, it ties into additionally, you know, um, scheduling and peak call volume times. I mean, it, it's a little bit more comprehensive than what we could pull together for this budget season, but it's certainly something we've looked at flagging to, to really work through that analysis for the next budget season.
Yeah. And I'd be supportive of understanding that. I think my concern would, around making some assumptions this year is that if those assumptions change, it would artificially make our budget jump that much more next year. If we then didn't assume such a vacancy rate.
I think it's something you can do every, every year. I mean, uh, employers routinely do that in, in budgeting. It just hasn't been done here before. And, and you're right, you need to do some analysis around it. Uh, I thought Amy was going to try to do that.
It's a goo- it's a good suggestion and it, it's absolutely, and it's, it's one of the ones we're looking at, as Maria just said, for the police department, right? Cause we, the chief needs more sworn officers on the street and we do have a challenge of hiring. And do you actually go to a higher approved headcount to get the sworn officers on the street without actually going up on the budgeted side, right? Is, is what we're, what we're looking at. Now, the danger is you, we lose the year-end savings um, that we've enjoyed as a community to, um, for a long time, but it, it does make a lot of sense, Linda. Um, to, to certainly to go deeper on that. And I think you would also suggest that looking at the legal line item, we are going to drop that one back down to the, the hundred thousand, right?
Right.
Cause I was, I was mistaken. Wendy, Wendy and Jackie were correct. I had, I had run my mouth about it, but we had not actually put it in the, uh, in the motions for a reduction. We had talked about it, but that, that, the 25 didn't, didn't make it into the list of, of motions. So I think that is going to come down as well.
Yeah. And Sean, that was just the, um, the labor council piece.
Right.
Okay, so where, uh, where are we? I, I don't know. I have completely lost what we, are we accomplishing anything here or not? I mean,
Oh, we are. We just cut 25 on the legal, on the, the.
Right. But again, what is the, I mean, we, this is, you know, that we do this every year. So what, where, where do we have to get? So we have a smooth next conversation. Is it just, is it just, did we do something? You know, was it 150 or we did 25? Now we can move, I mean, I don't, what do we?
Chris, if I get, if I could summarize, we, we, we make the recommendation and the board of finance enjoys line item authority. And if they disagree with what we want to do, um, you know, they can certainly change that. We're not trying to create a, a, a challenging conversation, but we need to look at, based on the, you know, the, the 15 hours of discussions we had. Um, it sounds like we, 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 we certainly needed to revisit the revenue side and we have, and Mr. Palmer clearly, um, stated, and he's right, that that's just not, we're done. We're looking at the legal account. We were looking at, um, trying to maybe um, enjoy some savings on the vacancy rates. But again, I, I don't think there's a number that anybody's comfortable recommending right now there. Um, and not dismissing it, but again, I don't think we're prepared to do it at this point unless Amy has some math, and I, I, I don't think that's the case. Um, and then the question is, is do we continue to support the items that we, we added? Cause the town manager came to us with, with budget X and we added Y. Um, I know Eric wasn't making the motion, but are we comfortable with all the additions in there? With the largest one being the, the, the maintainer position. And again, I'm not, I don't want to relitigate that debate. It's, it's in there. It's approved. Um, but do we want to restructure that to do a half year? Um, or, and then bring it on next year, or do we want to revisit that discussion? I think is what's on the table. Is that kind of a summary, Eric, of everything?
I think that's very, that's solid. You know, my concern with doing the half year is that if I, thinking about it right, it creates an that much more of a jump next year when the position's here and fully budgeted.
It's known. Yep.
I, I, I wanted to comment, I do have an email from Lisa, which I, I kind of assumed went to maybe to Amy. Um, and a lot of them, we've already talked about. She mentioned the legal fees, um, which also Linda mentioned. She did mention, um, using CNR for either some of the 110 or for the PD escalation, which was 8,000. Like, so if there's anything that could move in there. And then one thing that, um, sounds like a potential option is, um, the money that we're giving to the spirit council. And this is, says to check with Amy, um, if the, the $22,000, if that could be taken out of this year's year-end savings to move it into this year, which I think someone mentioned, um, as an option of something we could do. That's puts pretty much in line with things that we've discussed.
Yep.
Well, and on.
That would give, if, yeah.
Uh, not on that, but on the parks position, to go back to our conversation. Again, I, I know Tom Tiverski's on and he said he didn't want to say he overstated the um, efficiencies that the new software would create, but I'm just going to go back to that again. So if we didn't add that position and we got the software up and running, that's still my thought, that we could hold off on that position.
Yeah, um, Jackie, I, uh, I I don't want to say I respectfully disagree because I actually think the software is going to give us a lot of great insights, but I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's going to save us a full position based on my understanding of the, uh, department's needs. Um, and there's probably realistically not even one that we need, but probably a couple of positions in that department at least we need. So I, I'm very comfortable with moving.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, just before you move on that, Eric, I, Jackie, I, I agree. I think maybe if, um, please, don't take the inflection or connotation of my voice. Maybe if the positions were, uh, the maintain more, multiple maintainers, then I, I would like to possibly have a discussion around efficiency and scheduling in that, in that function, the maintainer function. But again, I think we've, we've, pardon, again, but the technician is, is adding significant additional capabilities to the, to the department that right now are not being done or being done using out, outside resources and money spent. So it's, I don't know that that person is really a deployable asset to, to take, to take up, um, you know, labor costs or labor capacity elsewhere. I think it's actually an additional, uh, capability we're getting out of this person. So maybe again, the, that we could have the efficiency conversation of the software if we were deploying multiple additional maintainers, but this one is, is different, it's a different.
So Chris, I, I hear that. I understand that this position wasn't in our budget, right? So we added this. It wasn't, so I don't disagree. Okay, I'm open to it. Where's another place that we can cut?
Right. Yeah, we, the, 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 the maintainer position is a, is, is a multi-year, has been a multi-year conversation. It's been kicked out continuously. So that's, you know, where we can cut, we can tell every single person that, that, that has the ability to buy something in town, not to buy one thing. Okay, don't buy a box of paper, you know?
That's not, that, okay, that's, can we, can we come up with a solution, please?
Folks, I'm comfortable with making a recommendation, uh, tonight, uh, to the board of finance around the two items that we have consensus around.
Which ones are those?
Which was the, um, keeping the legal fees flat and increasing our, uh, building permit revenue.
Okay.
Um, is, if, are there any other specific ideas that anyone wanted to put on the table?
Are there other items that we can cut, like the ones under the traditional payback? Would those, you, please tell me, because I'm the one that threw out other things under the TAR that, that won't affect or we can't do. So.
Those are already, Jackie, those are the.
That's my question. Okay.
Wendy's suggestion does take things out of this year's, but again, it gets back to the, the philosophical conversation we were having with Rob a couple of minutes ago of pay for him this year, pay for him next year, tax now, tax later, don't tax now, but tax later. It's, we can go a couple of different directions there. I mean, at the end of the day, we're talking about what, point zero two, three mils, sir?
Well, it was, it would have been, it, it would have added, um, it looked like Maria and Amy, you could correct me. Um, but the, the revenue change dropped the, the tax, like $10, it seemed like. And then if we, right, I think it went to like $67 if I was working on the right sheet. And then, so that's why I was trying to find another 125 or so, because it would drop it another 10, which brought it back to where we started before we added in the 6.625. And that was kind of where I found, that's why I went with the, the big hit of the, the 110.
Uh, this is Linda, can I make a comment? I, I just wanted to, um, kind of support Wendy's suggestion about moving the spirit money into this year, only because at least as I understand it, and I could be totally wrong. But it looks to me, what, what little information I have about that, that it's a one-time request. So it's not going to create a, you know, budget cliff for you in future years. It's a one-time request.
Yep.
That's true.
Again, I, I have no issue with doing that, but.
No, I'm in agreement with that. I just, it's still trying to get us to.
That doesn't change the. If you want to cut a hundred grand, there's two places to do it. The retainer, the maintainer's position or the capital items, right? The capital items is not a cut, it's a shift. So that's really the, otherwise we reopen the entirety of Maria's presented budget and go start making arbitrary cuts that really aren't supported by the discussions we had with staff. Right? Is, and I'm, we can certainly do that, but just to try to cut to the chase in the evening. It's really two places to go.
Also, just click on that 22,000 for the spirit council. It's fine if you want to use year-end savings. Just know that if year-end savings don't exist, then you basically lose that or you have to take it out of general fund reserves. So we are anticipating year-end savings, however, um, we don't know where the Parks and Rec Fund is going to end up. If that ends up in a deficit, we are going to have to cover that. And then also on the board of education side, they are currently under spending freeze. Um, and have already exceeded their budget theoretically through the end of the year. Um, and they have been appropriated, they're non-lapsing. So if their budget freeze doesn't, um, give us what we need, although I anticipate it will, but if it doesn't, we could lose those savings. So just keep that in mind.
Thanks, Amy.
Maybe we'll have the American Rescue Plan money, uh, at that point.
How many, how many, um, you know, this goes to, I know, I, I functionally, I'm may- maybe missing uh, the process here about whether we open the budget up. But Maria, real quick, how many prospective um, the funding, uh, projects do we have, like prospective, like we're putting money is, uh, uh, into, uh, for foreseeable projects in the future. For, you know, Tom, don't fall off the, Tom Tiverski, don't fall off your chair. For example, we're putting 25K a year into the, the playscape. What additional, remind me what additional events like that are occurring right now? Without a, without, without a specific budgeted spend at the end of them.
Right. So, um, we currently have the play, the small-scale playscape. We've been, um, budgeting 25 a year. It generally takes, um, two chunks of 25,000 to fund a small-scale playscape. We have six total um, that need replacements. So at this point, we have funded one. Um, so that would leave essentially, um, you know, about 10 years before we would be fully through the smaller scale playscape that need, uh, to be replaced. We also established, uh, four years ago now, our sidewalk, uh, maintenance and replacement program. And that includes the, uh, ramps to make them ADA compliant. So with this budget cycle, we would be in year four of 20. Um, and that's $200,000 a year. We also have, um, the replacement of our park signs. So we are in year two of that plan. Um, we were setting aside $16,000 a year and depending on the nature of the sign that needs to be replaced, we can tackle about two to three signs a year. And I know Tom's on, on the line. I'm going to forget the number, but I want to say we have 13 signs total that, you know, are rotted and deteriorating and, and eventually needed replacement. Did I get it right, Tom? Was it 13?
I think you're right, Maria. That's about the right number.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. So we've got, you know, a bit, a bit longer to go with that as well. Um, so I would say those are a couple of the key areas. Um, we also, of course, have our paving program, uh, which is similar in nature, but much, you know, much larger scale. Uh, and then our sidewalk, um, excuse me, our bike path, uh, maintenance account, you may recall, we were using sort of an old a number that happened to develop by previous staff. And, um, we've really refined that to say, moving forward, it's about $100,000 a year that we would be setting aside on an annual basis to keep all of our bike trails, you know, paved, um, you know, fencing, tree work, that sort of thing. So those are, I would say, the key programs that we have. Um, and then for the current budget, we also introduced a technology replacement plan, which was really important because we hadn't been doing that. We were very haphazardly replacing technology. Um, letting things go, you know, 12 years longer, um, until it would just absolutely die on us. So, um, that was again, something new we had introduced this year for things like staff PCs and our public terminals at the library.
So, I think, so Tom, I am going to pick on you now, sorry, is that the, the, that project, that, that replacement project, if I'm correct, that schedule was established prior to the delivery of the Parks and Rec master plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I save you, can I just jump in, buddy? None of what the, that Maria just said, if we cut, changes the operating budget.
But we are, which, it, it, but it does take, if you, if you do stop, if you do stop allocating from, from some fund.
It's in the traditional CNR payback and, and other places. It's not coming out of the operating budget. So.
Yeah, but I'm also trying to change our dynamic. I, I'm trying to ensure that we're changing the dynamic of how we're spending people's, you know, a, a cent or a dollar or whichever, okay? If we can't, if we can't do the shell game right here, like we're supposed to, you know, they're trying to do, then there's a way to get at this, I think, long-term as far as showing discipline and that we're a board that is actually making tough decisions and starting to move back from approving and spending and supporting every single service. And I think these are potentially uh, austerity measures, you know, that we have to consider. And that's the mindset I'm trying to say that we're not, that we're possible of this, people, we're possible. It's possible we can do this. So, you know, sorry, Tom, but is that, we know that the Parks and Rec Master Plan, I think Kevin says you shouldn't replace all your playscape, possibly.
Correct. We're not replacing all of them.
So is that six? It's the, the one that you've already accounted for what you knew you weren't going to replace then?
No, Tom. Forest won't be replaced. Uh, the One Memorial will depend on the pool project. Uh, Terrif- Terriffel was the next one in line, uh, followed by Weetog.
Well.
So, i- and, and the master plan does back that up. It does say we need to maintain and, and replace these things as they age. Um, it was, you know, we did start the plan before the, before the master plan was finalized, but it was something we knew we had to do.
So, Chris, going back.
I certainly understand what you're saying about some of the ones, uh, not, you know, we do have to make a position.
But Chris, going back to the larger question though, about reducing our footprint, whether it's in our small parks or other town assets. That's a conversation that I would love to have and I, I would be committed to having throughout the year, outside of these intense two or three weeks of budget season. So that way, when we get to budget season, we're able to, you know, appropriately fund the things that we've decided we're going to invest in. And I just feel like right now is a, a tough time to make those calls.
Yeah. And if I could, Eric, just quickly add, add to that point, you know, I think I, I might have mentioned this in an email to the board of selectmen, but you know, if we do start to have some, um, you know, policy discussions about reducing our footprint, um, right? That is essentially, you know, service, service reductions, which is obviously a big decision. But particularly when it comes to our parks infrastructure, I do just want to be cognizant of, um, geographic equity. But particularly when it comes to our parks infrastructure, I do just want to be cognizant of geographic equity within town, as well as socioeconomic equity within town. I think that's really important for us. And sort of unrelated to budget season, staff had been working on a project related to our Belden Trust and had pulled some I think, pretty compelling statistical data, particularly about Terriffill in terms of, you know, number of residents, meaning low moderate income, right, from a geographic equity perspective, they're isolated from the rest of town. Coincidentally, the playscape we were planning to replace next happened to be Terriffill Park. So I mean, again, I think as we think sort of big picture and longer term, yeah, reducing, you know, the parks footprint. Actually, again, I think we just really do want to be cognizant of some of the socioeconomic and geographic equity concerns and any data that, you know, we can help, you know, provide to the board to help inform that discussion, we're happy to do for you.
Eric, if I could, can we get, I think that's all really, really good stuff. But at the matter at hand tonight, are we cutting anything else from the operating budget or not?
So why don't why don't we start here? Actually, before we do that, Rob, you've been trying to get in, and then I want to see if we can get.
I was going to encourage what Sean just asked. I, you know, I my wife calls me a bully, and I apologize for it, but.
I get called worse. It's okay, Rob.
We do have a couple of people that have dropped dead at 8:30 kind of thing and on the Board of Finance. And so I would like you to suggest that you get to Sean's question, and then maybe we move on for you guys, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, let's start where I think we have consensus. Is there a motion effective March 22nd, 2021, to recommend to the Board of Finance an increase in the building permit revenues for fiscal year 2122 of $125,000, bringing the total budgeted building permit revenue to $800,000. And also to reduce the recommended expenditure on Labor Council by $25,000, effectively keeping it flat from previous year.
I moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jackie seconded. Any further conversation on those items? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Before we move on, is there anything else that anyone wanted to add or any specific proposals to to of items to cut per the Board of Finance's request of us?
So could so could I make a motion here to pay, take the 110 from the general fund, move it to reserves? It may not, it may be a sleight of hand, but it would lower the taxpayers' rate this year.
You may. Is there a second? Is there a second to that motion?
I would second it. But I'm like you said, I'm aware that we're going to be paying these. What did you say, Sean? Whether it's this year or next year?
Okay. Any further conversation? All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Okay, the motion fails three to two. Are there any other items that anyone wanted to call a vote on? Okay, thanks for the conversation tonight. Let's move on. Appointments and resignations. Is there a motion retroactive to February 12, 2021, to accept the resignation of Susan Krensky as an alternate member of the Aging and Disability Commission?
With our thanks, I move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion effective March 22, 2021, to appoint Deborah Glass as an alternate member of the Aging and Disability Commission with a term ending January 1, 2022?
I think I move that.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Is there a motion effective March 22, 2021, to reappoint Cheryl Cook as a regular member of the Housing Authority with a term expiring April 1, 2026?
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Is there a motion retroactive to March 8, 2021, to accept the resignation of Jerry Wetchen as a regular member of the Culture, Parks and Rec Commission?
To move with our huge thanks, Jerry.
I'll second.
I can.
All in favor? Aye. Is there a motion effective March 31, 2021, to accept the resignation of Sherry Kalman as a regular member of the Clean Energy Task Force and Sustainability Team?
With that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there a motion retroactive to November 18, 2020, to accept the resignation of Mary Turner as a regular member of the Sustainability Team?
With our thanks, I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion retroactive to March 12, 2021, to accept the resignation of Chris Kelly as a regular member of Community for Care?
Move that with our thanks.
Second. This is, this is where we need Mike Payne. He was always the quick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion retroactive to March 8, 2021, to accept the resignation of Katie Martin as a regular member and Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Sadly, and with our.
Katie.
Yeah, with our thanks, I'll second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've got four minutes, four meeting minutes to review. Are there any proposed changes on any of these?
Now they look outstanding. Thanks.
Excellent work. Okay. Were there any selectmen liaison and subcommittee reports?
Nope.
Anything under communication anyone wanted to raise? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the potential purchase of the Meadowwood property, joined by the Board of Finance, Bob DiCrescenzo, Honor Lawler, Pat Wellspeak, our appraiser, Maria Capriola, Melissa Appleby, Amy Merriweather, Francine Beland, Mike Liddon, Tom Taberski.
I'll move that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.